I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. If you'd all please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have roll call? Actually, you know what? Before you do that, I'm going to read this. Given the current shelter in place order covering the state of California and the social distance guidelines issued by federal, state, and local authorities, the city is implementing changes to participate in planning commission meetings until notified otherwise. The council chambers will be open to the public, but we will be implementing social distancing policies and will limit the number of people who may be in the council chambers. All attendees are required to wear masks to enter the council chambers. The meeting will be webcast and accessed at the city's website. Members of the public are encouraged to participate in the meetings by accessing the website, providing written comment at the same website, participating by the phone, or coming to the planning commission meeting in person, where again, we're practicing social distancing and can only accommodate a maximum of 16 guests at one time. Now can we have roll call?
Commissioner Antuna?
Here.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Here.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Here.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Here.
And Chair Hatcher?
Here.
And can we have approval of the minutes from last month?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Cunningham, second by Commissioner Hinkle, for approval of the November 19th minutes. Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes. Do we have any commission secretary comments?
Yes, we've had a few changes to the personnel in the planning division and the planning and development services department. I think there's already been an acknowledgement that the first of this month interim director Renee Mathis became the permanent director of planning and development services. So congratulations Renee. Also, earlier this week, we had the retirement of Orlando Ramirez. So his last day in the office was Tuesday, and he officially became retired at the end of the day on Tuesday. The very next day was the first day of George Gonzalez's role as senior planner, who's promoted from associate to senior. George has been, for a long time, one of the workhorses of the department and a co-vaire expert on issues such as annexation and spheres of influence expansion. So George will be filling the role of senior planner for the foreseeable future, and he'll be interacting along with Ricky as kind of a rotating secretary to the planning commission. So you'll see me for a little bit in this role, and then I'll rotate Ricky and George in, and so everybody gets a little taste of it going forward. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any planning commission member comments?
Yes. So I'd like to congratulate Renee for being appointed to her new position in charge of the planning department. Is there anybody here that can address AB 2345 that was signed into law last week? If not, can you update us at our next meeting on that? From my reading it and understanding, it affects us, the city of Clovis in some ways in this. So how does it affect us, and do we have to make changes or whatever on it? So if someone could update us on that next week, I'd sure appreciate it.
Could you repeat what the legislation is? What?
AB 2345.
2345. We'll check it out and get back to you.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Commissioner Bedstead or Commissioner Antuna, do you have any comments?
None for me.
No comments at this time, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to echo Commissioner Hinkle's congratulatory statement to our new planning director and also to our new senior planner. They're two great members of our team and look forward to a lot of challenges.
Okay, I will now move to business from the floor. This is an opportunity for any member of the public who would like to address the planning commission on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Okay, seeing none, I will close that and bring it to the public hearing. First item, consider approval V 2020-003, a request to approve a variance for reduced lot widths with tentative track map TM 6182, a seven lot, single-family residential development on property located north of Shaw Avenue between Leonard and Highland Avenue. John Bonadelli, Bonadelli Homes Incorporated applicant, Gundes Derry, California General Partnership owner, Nathan Gleves, Precision Civil Engineering representative. Staff?
Good evening Chair Hatcher and members of the commission. So the project location is on this awkwardly shaped parcel that you see here outlined in red. It's a little hard to tell because of aerial, but there's actually seven lots that were previously approved here. So going into some of the background, back in 2017, there was a track map and variance at that time approved for that subject property. The track map approved seven single-family residential lots, and the variance at that time approved a reduction in lot widths from the R1 development standards from a required 60 feet to 50 feet because of the awkward shape of the parcel. The applicant currently is in the process of purchasing that track map from the existing owner, and in order to increase the viability of lot development, the applicant now is seeking to revise the previously approved lot widths. If approved tonight, variance 2020-003 would supersede the previously approved one in 2017. So on this chart, you can see that the existing width is shown as 50 feet because that's what was approved back in 2017, and the proposed widths in that right side column is what they're proposing today. So you have two lots, one and seven, which would go down to 35 feet, and then you have some ranging up from there to 39 and 44, and then you have three lots in the middle that are 52 feet. So as shown on the previously approved map, you can kind of see how the parcels are just all kind of awkwardly shaped and kind of fanned out like a blade. The existing map, if approved with the variance, would kind of straighten those out a little bit to make more or less standard size lots or standard lots in that they're a little bit more linear. As you can see there, the three lots in the middle are now more rectangular shaped. So with this variance, it wouldn't affect any other conditions that were previously approved as part of that track map in 2017. So nothing is being deviated from what was previously approved. All those conditions from three years ago would remain in effect, and that would all carry over into this new development. All other development standards of the R1 zone district would remain. That includes height, the other setbacks, side setbacks, rear, front, lot coverage, all that would remain the same. The only thing that's being requested is the lot width for the frontage of the property. 35-foot lot widths have been approved in other subdivisions that we have, which I'll show you in the next slide or two. So we have seen this type of product before with this lot width, and it does work. And based on the findings as presented in the staff report, staff does support the request for the variance. So these are two subdivisions. Kind of hard to tell here, but the one on the left side is the elevations product that is currently being built out on Leonard and Gettysburg. All of those lots, lot widths, or most of them are 36 feet. There are a couple that are 35. So again, we have approved lots at this width before. The one you see on the right is a development south of Ashland, east of Leonard. And in particular, I wanted to show you aerials on the next slide of these three lots. Two of these are 36 feet, and then one of them is 35 at the knuckle, which is very similar to what the applicant is proposing with variance 2020-003. So these kind of show you logistically, you know, how a house could be placed, because you know, when you hear 35-foot lot width, it sounds very narrow, but it works. And in particular, these lots are actually a lot smaller than the one of 6182. They're actually much deeper lots, and they actually get a lot wider on the sides. But the important part here is that the frontages do work with single-family homes on them. And again, this is just kind of a conceptual plan, actually on lot number seven of 6182, of what a house could look like on there. You know, of note, the driveway would be a standard width in compliance with other standards that we have for driveway widths. The three little black squares that you see there were intended to show how trash receptacles would still function on a smaller width lot. So as you can see, the proper spacing would still be accommodated even with a smaller width frontage lot. And then also with the side yard setbacks of the R1 district, they would be a minimum of five feet. Probably in most cases, you're going to get one side yard that's larger, as kind of shown on this conceptual plan, but there'd still be plenty of room on the sides to park your trash toters. So with that, staff requests or recommends that the planning commission approve variance 2020-003. Staff's available for any questions? And I know the applicant is here as well, if you have any questions for him.
Do we have any questions for staff? Mr. Antuna or Bedstead, do you have any questions?
None from Commissioner Antuna.
No questions at this time, thank you.
Okay, we'll open it up for the applicant. If you'd please state your name and your address for the record.
John Bonadelli, 7030 North Fruit, number 101. We agree with staff's recommendation for approval, and I'm here to answer any questions. I also wanted to thank the staff for getting this item on the agenda so quickly. We made the request a few weeks ago and very much appreciate it, so thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
So if I understand what is in front of us, the main reason for changing the lot lines was to straighten the lots out more.
Correct.
Make it a little easier to build.
Yes, exactly. And we're not changing the density or anything like that, or the lot count. These are really big lots, they're just really narrow, and so it makes it very difficult to fit, you know, the product type that we'd like to build here that we think would complement these lots. It just makes it very difficult to build with these narrow lots. And so we looked at this every which way without trying to, you know, come and request a variance to get these lots to fit, and we just couldn't make it work, and so that's why we requested the variance.
And you're going to continue to have the five-foot side yard spacing on the garage side?
Yes, yes. All the other Clovis standards we're adhering to, full-length driveways, setbacks, you know, standard-sized garages, sidewalks in front, it's just this one variance that we are requesting. The other item I wanted to point out is three of the seven lots on this new proposed plan are actually 52-foot wide, so they're in excess of the current variance in place on this tract. It's just those four lots, the two on the north end and then the two on the south end of the map that are very tricky to plot out, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll open it up for anyone here to speak in favor of this item?
There are none online.
Okay, anyone here to speak in opposition?
None online.
Okay, seeing that, I'll close the public portion and bring it back to the commission. Questions, comments?
I'm ready for a motion. I'll move to approve variance 2020-003 for tentative track map, tentative track map 6182.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Cunningham, second by Commissioner Hinkle to approve variance 2020-003. Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the next item. Consider approval TM 6340, a request to approve a vesting tentative track map for a 41-lot single-family residential development on property located at the southeast corner of Ashland and Thompson Avenue. Tendco Properties LLC applicant Carl Armstrong, owner of Stone Valley Communities representative. Staff?
Thank you Chair. Good evening commissioners. As indicated, the project is located at the southwest corner of Ashland and Thompson Avenue within the Loma Vista community. The properties make up about nine acres of vacant and parcels that do have existing single-family homes, which would be, which would remain as remainder lots, as you'll see. This image here is just to give you an idea of what surrounds this track map. Currently, everything there, again, very rural residential area, agriculturally focused area, however, is planned in the city's general plan and specific plan for development in the future. You'll see single-family residential development surrounding this property here, as well as across the street, and mixed-use business campus uses in the future across the street as well. So this property is actually currently not within city limits, but is under consideration with reorganization 299, also known as the Ashland-Thompson Southeast Reorganization. The application has actually already gone through planning commission and council, however, still under review by Fresno County and Lasco. And that boundary is what you see in blue, which includes the project boundary. The property, the property, well, the annexation boundary as well as the project boundary is currently designated medium-density residential, which was approved with the GPA and rezon request that went along with the annexation request through commission and council. So that allows for 4.1 to 7 dwelling units per acre, in which this track map meets at 4.6 dwelling units per acre. And this exhibit here just shows you the land uses in the surrounding areas, again, single-family residential uses, public facilities, and agricultural uses. And this particular project area here is zoned R1 MD, which will be required to, of course, meet those standards. You'll see minimum lot sizes of 4,500 square feet. There's a minimum parcel width of 50, parcel depth of 90, and then the corresponding development standards, including setbacks and parcel coverage and height, will be met with this track map as well. So this is track map 6340. It's a 41-lot subdivision with two remainder lots, and those remainder lots are what you'll see, you see as the two existing residences in this area. The streets, internal streets will be standard local streets. They will, they will, they will be consistent with that of track map 6161, which is the track that was approved along the east and south boundaries of this project. So essentially, those two, this project and that project will connect. And in this area here, again, because it is in the Loma Vista area, the corner of Ashland and Thompson Avenue actually calls out for a gateway, so the developer will have to provide a community gateway in that corner. With that being said, staff was able to make all findings for the track map. The track map meets the goals and policies of the general plan, the R1 MD Zone District, and is in compliance, in conformance with the environmental analysis that was amended for GPA 2016-10. And therefore, staff do recommend that the planning commission approve track map 6340, again, associated with conditions of approval provided as attachment one. This concludes my report, and I'm open for questions.
Any questions for staff?
Yes, now, this will come back before us later when they decide what houses to put where on it, and then we'll decide on driveways and everything else like that.
Actually, no. So R1 MD is not like a PRD where you see those standards coming before you. The R1 MD Zone District is actually a by-rights zone district, so the development, once they finalize, once they do record a final map, will develop according to the R1 MD Zone District standards.
So then they would not have to have the five-foot setback and side yards if they wanted less they could?
So the R1 MD Zone District actually has an interior side yard setback requirement of five feet, so you still get your five-foot, minimum five-foot side yard setback.
Okay, so they will not be able to adjust that?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, is the applicant here?
My name is Manny Penn. My address is 3370 Loyola Avenue, Clovis, California, 93619. I want to thank you and staff for giving the opportunity to speak in front of you this evening, and especially thanking Lilly for this excellent presentation. Our project, Track 6161, was approved back in 2017 for 142 lots, and we'll just bring this in together now, to complete the quarter section. And like Lilly was saying, we're just, you know, eager to get this project off the ground and get it annexed, hopefully in the next couple months. I'm available for answering any questions and ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. I'll now open it up for anybody here to speak in favor of this item.
Madam Chairperson, the members of the commission, my name is Bud Armstrong. I reside at 9527 East Ashland, Clovis, California. We sold the surrounding property to Manny a few years ago, and he's bought other property, and I'm the only one that's left there in rural residential. We may sell half of my, I live on one acre, the other half to him later on. But as far as being in the city of Clovis, I'd just like to mention that I was in the fire services for many years. In the last 17 years, I was the chief of the Fresno County Fire District and then the city of Fresno. And I'm very happy with the sheriff's office service that I received and the fire department, of course, but I don't think, I don't figure I'll be losing anything by being in the city of Clovis, because you have an excellent fire department and excellent police department. And you also, it's my impression, you do a good job dealing with the peaceful coexistence between urban and rural people, so I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor?
No one online.
Okay. Anyone to speak in opposition?
None online.
Okay, I will close the public portion and bring it back to the commission for comments, questions, motions?
This is Commissioner Bedstead. I have no questions or comments. I'm ready to make a motion if others are.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. With that, then I will motion to approve track map 6340.
Second.
Sorry, motion to approve track map 6340 by Commissioner Bedstead, second by Commissioner Antuna. Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
Okay, seeing that, we'll move on to the next item. Consider approval, a request to amend the PCC Zone District to establish the Loma Vista Marketplace, PCC Zone District standards for approximately 23 acres of property located at the southwest corner of Shaw and Leonard Avenue. Loma Vista Marketplace LP applicant, Provost and Pritchard Consulting Group representative. Staff?
Thank you Chair. So rezon 2020-004 is a request to amend the PCC standards of the Planning Area 5 within the community master, community center master plan in the Loma Vista community. The project is situated on approximately 23 acres of vacant land located at the southwest corner of Shaw and Leonard Avenue. So as indicated, the project is within the community centers north and south master plan, and in, which was established in May of 2009, later on amended in 2019 to modify the circulation. The vision was to provide for dynamic pedestrian-oriented districts with intimate scaled mix of land uses. So this is, in this area, you're going to see higher-density residential uses, higher-density mixed uses, mixed commercial uses. Again, this area was designed to be the social, retail, service, and entertainment hub of the Loma Vista community. So Planning Area 5, the project is located on a portion of Planning Area 5, as you see highlighted in green here. Planning Area 5 has a planned commercial center zone, zone district, which is to be amended. And what the PCC Zone District provides are, really is a development plan with uses, development standards, and unique design criteria. And this rezon is to, proposing to establish specific PCC standards for the marketplace commercial center project that you see before you. So this exhibit here is of the development standards proposed for the marketplace. You see, you should have read this in your staff report, but here you have established building setbacks, which are very similar to the existing PCC Zone District of Planning Area 5, very similar building intensities, including the building height and floor area ratios. And they are also proposing a different parking ratio standard. In this case, it's a 4.0, four parking stalls for every thousand square feet of gross floor area. And in this case, staff is agreeable with this proposal, just because this, again, this is a high-density area, pedestrian-oriented, oriented area with a really comprehensive network of trails and sidewalks that it's expected that most people around here will be walking. So this here is the master site plan. The project boundary is indicated in red there. Again, it's 23 acres of properties. There are approximately 17 buildings. The approximate footprints are highlighted here in this pink color. Total gross floor area is about 216,000 square feet, which is a really large shopping center. And building, building areas range between 2,300 square feet to 26,000 square feet from the major tenants. This project is planned to be phased. The first phase of development is indicated here in green. It's about 12 acres with about seven buildings making up about 88,000 square feet of gross floor area. Planning Area 1, indicated in green, is about a 15-acre area. It's a retail-focused area that also allows for office and service-type uses. The major tenants, again, is in this red area here. There are about 53,000 square feet of building area designated towards the major tenants. There are three drive-throughs proposed in this area here. You'll see them in purple here. Buildings range from 2,300 square feet to 4,600 square feet. And the remaining retail buildings range between 4,200 square feet and just under 10,000 square feet. Planning Area 2 is indicated in yellow. It's about four and a half acres. These uses are pedestrian-oriented uses, which is perfect for the future Sanders Avenue, which is this north-south street here. Again, the buildings here are oriented to have, to be closer to the sidewalks and to have outdoor patios adjacent to the sidewalk for outdoor dining or any sort of retail uses that would allow for outdoor, the use of the outdoors. Buildings range between 6,300 square feet to 9,600 square feet in this area. And then Planning Area 3, indicated in red, has a proposed two-story office, about 4,100 square feet or 41,000 square feet, indicated there. And then a proposed daycare, about 5,000 square feet, indicated in this area here. So each of these areas corresponds with the use schedule here. As you can see in green, I highlighted it in colors just so it's a little more clear area. One in green, area two in yellow, and area three in red. The use schedule divides the uses, or sections the use, by uses that are more assembly-oriented, which is in the first section. Uses related to motor vehicle trades and services in the second section, and then retail uses, service uses, and any residential live-work type uses. So anything with a P is permitted. Anything that requires a special entitlement with either a conditional use permit is CUP or administrative use permit is AUP. And anything that is blank or actually marked with a dash is not permitted in that area. So going to circulation, the project fronts, actually has five street frontages. The first is Shaw Avenue. There is one access from Shaw Avenue onto this project site. The next is Leonard Avenue, and there are three access points onto the project site. And then the future Duncan Avenue with five access onto the project site. And then the future, we're actually under construction right now, Loma Vista Parkway with one access onto the site. And then Sanders Avenue with an additional access onto the site there. So this, in blue here are the major driveways through the center that provides connection to the street frontages. This project will also be providing an urban trail. The trail delineation is in green here along Leonard Avenue and then to the south of the future Duncan Avenue, and it'll carry over to connect with the rest of the trail network in this area. Trail right-of-way is 30 feet minimum with about, with a 10- to 12-foot paved walkway and about 20 feet of landscaping. And to show you the kind of pedestrian connectivity within the center, I just highlighted that So again, like with the other project, this project here is located in a master plan as well as the Loma Vista community. So it does have designated gateways that are required. The major gateway is, or community gateway, is required at the southwest corner of Shaw and Leonard Avenues, indicated in blue there. The top photo that you see there is of the existing gateway that was recently completed for the shopping center to the north of this, at the northwest corner of Shaw and Leonard Avenues. So that's just to provide you an example of how that could look like. And then to the bottom, at the northwest corner of the future Loma Vista Parkway and Leonard Avenues, is a community entry requirement. And the bottom photo there shows you an example of what's actually across the street at the single-family development. So again, it'll be very similar to this gateway that you see there. Architecture, the theme that is provided with the marketplace is going to pay homage to the Mission Revival design. Here you see neutral colors, tiled roofs, and arched openings. And staff do believe that the architecture provided is appropriate for this area. With that being said, the project is consistent with goals and policies of the general plan, will not be detrimental to public health, and is, the properties are suitable for the proposed PCC zoning and anticipated land uses. Therefore, staff do recommend that planning commission approve Rezone 2020-004, subject to, subjected to the conditions of approval in attached, as attached as attachment one. This concludes my report, and I am open for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Where is this in relation to the connection between north and south with the crossing on Shaw Avenue?
Yeah, so let me, I'm going to go back to the aerial. So the future Sanders Avenue, actually, the future Sanders Avenue is lined here, and then the undercrossing is going to be right there.
So it would be on the far, excuse me, the far west side, northwest side?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, is the applicant here? Can you push the middle button? The middle button to take a?
There you go. All right. Thank you, Chair Hatcher and Commissioners. I want to thank Lilly and Dwight and the planning department. It's been a long journey. And we want to also thank, thank you for engaging the community in the process. Sure, it's Philip Neufeld. And Will Dyke wasn't able to make it tonight, but he's a strong partner and a thoughtful partner in the process. I want to also thank Sarah Allender and her team from Provost and Pritchard. Like I say, it's been a long, long journey. We look forward to realizing the vision for community, the Loma Vista Community Center as a whole, and especially excited to develop Loma Vista Marketplace as a place for retail services, for community gatherings, and as a part of, quite frankly, the heart of Loma Vista Community Center. So very much looking forward to moving forward. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
None online.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I'll now open it up for anyone to speak in favor of this item?
None online.
Any to speak in opposition?
None.
Okay, I'll close that. Oh, go ahead. That's fine. If you'd please give your full name and your address for the record?
Absolutely. My name is Teresa Sebastian. My address is 3176 Austin Avenue in Clovis. And let me preface this by saying, I was on the original Southeast Urban Planning Group that was pre-Loma Vista. So I'm very excited that this is finally coming online and is seeing some fruition. And wanted to comment, I was very happy to see that they're taking so much into consideration, that this is going to be a hub for people who are walking in or biking in, and hopefully it's going to be a great location. And I appreciated that it, the way you've done the planning, so the outside doesn't look like a strip mall. I just was hoping in the elevations, as they stand today, to see a few more details. It just looks a little, I don't mean to offend you, but a little ordinary. It's a little bit dated. If we're Mission Revival, I think the standard for Mission Revival is Santa Barbara-like. And I just wasn't getting that with this. But like I said, that's my personal opinion. And then just a reminder that there are still people that are farming in that area, and appreciate the fact that anything that could be done to mitigate what they will be working through with this development. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public portion and bring it back to the commission for comments, I'd like to say, I think the plan looks very good, very detailed. I do think that we have seen more, in response to your question, I think we've seen more detail on some of the other plans for this area in terms of what the mission style would look like. I think this is just kind of one little, one little thing, you know, Lilly could probably show you more pictures as to what they're looking for to kind of give you a better idea of what, what the style will be. But I think the plan looks great, and I'm excited it's moving forward. Commissioner Bedstead or Antuna, do you have any questions or comments?
I have no questions, but I would echo your statement that I like the plan, looks like a great project.
I have a question. Do we have any probable tenants? I'm just curious as to who's coming to that development. I know we've been waiting a really long time for it, and I'm excited. It looks, I love it. It looks really beautiful. It looks like a great project. But I was just wondering if, who, now we're putting commercial in there, if we had any probable or any prospective tenants.
I will allow the applicant to respond to that if they are willing.
So first of all, how long the journey has been is, I actually, as a kid, was shaking almonds off of the trees after the harvest on this, one of these parcels. So it's been a while. I want to be careful from a lease standpoint and a competitive standpoint, so I'll mention what kinds of tenants we already have in place. Folks who serve some really delicious coffee-like drinks, folks who do hair, folks who serve pizza, folks who serve wonderful fast food, folks who have some great dinner meals, and folks who do nails. So lots of folks in that, from that standpoint, that are signed up, and we're looking for more anchor tenants. So I know Clovis has been looking with us on those, for those placements. The good news is we've got the right kind of space for those anchor tenants. And when we're finished Phase 1, Phase 2 is going to have some great restaurants and an assortment of restaurants on the west side. And as you see from what Lilly described, it's the kind of space where you can go and hang out and walk about and enjoy the food. So, yeah.
I too think that this project, long time in coming, but glad it's here, and look forward to seeing the variety of tenants that will be there and make it successful for you and for the community. And with that, I will move to approve Rezone 2020-004.
Motioner by Commissioner Cunningham, second by Commissioner Hinkle, to approve rezoning 2020-003. Commissioner Cunningham.
Is that three or four? I'm sorry.
Hold on. I didn't have it on my list. Oh, 24.
It's four.
It's four.
2004, yes.
My fault?
Yes. Not that it's your fault. I'm betting.
Both are, both are accurate. Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Chair Hatcher?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any old business?
Yes, if you'll indulge staff for just a minute, or if that's your, that's your option. A city attorney made a note that he does have some information with regard to the assembly bill that Commissioner Hinkle mentioned at the beginning. So if you'd like an answer to that this evening, we can return to that for just a minute.
Thank you. And I wanted to verify that I was looking at the correct bill before I opened my mouth and responded. But Commissioner Hinkle, you were correct that this is a land use bill that will affect the city and the commission. It is something that our office and staff is aware of. I can provide a more detailed description or summary for you at the next meeting, but in brief summary, it changes some of the requirements for the density bonus law. It adds some additional categories, increases some of the categories. And the best of my recollection is that it affects both the density bonus, the number of concessions, as well as some of the other items such as relaxing parking requirements. This is something that we have been looking at previously because last year, state laws changed certain aspects of this same section of the government code related to density bonuses. An urgency ordinance was approved by the council to bring the municipal code into compliance with those state law changes. City Attorney's Office and staff have been working to put amendments together that can go through the full process before the planning commission and then the council to permanently amend the ordinances to comply with the state law requirements. With everything going on this year, not the least of which was COVID, some of that got pushed back. The state legislature still managed to approve a few bills that affected certain aspects of housing law and land use that were the subject of this prior urgency ordinance. Our intent now is to roll it all together, develop amendments that can be brought before the commission and then the council to address all of these housing law changes that the legislature has passed in the last two years. And if there are any questions, I'll try to address them.
I appreciate you looking into that there, and I'm waiting to see what, what you come up with versus what I read in there. I hope I read things that aren't there. Thank you.
And having been a frequent visitor to the city council meeting, this isn't totally unexpected. You expected something like this, from what I understand, because I know we went through a process just recently of amending the city ordinances, and there was a comment made back then that we'll probably have to do it again because others are coming to the pipeline. So I guess what I'm making more of a statement is you kind of, this is not unheard of. We knew it was coming down. Not that we necessarily agree with it, but we knew it was coming.
I think that's a fair statement. The urgency ordinance to address the 2019 state housing laws was approved in December of 2019. As soon as the next legislative session started, there was a litany of new bills introduced that addressed housing. Some of them advanced, some of them didn't, what you would expect in the typical process. And as long as the state legislature has as their goal, and it's been expressed about addressing the housing crisis, it's probably fair to anticipate additional bills being proposed, some of which may eventually be signed into a law. And the, in general, those laws have required amendments to the municipal code. We will do our best to identify those and recommend appropriate changes. We will do our best to identify those and recommend appropriate changes.
Thank you. Any other old business? Seeing none, any new business? Okay, seeing none, I will adjourn the meeting at 6:50.